Councilman Shiska. It's a big week coming up for us. I think so. Good, good to see you. Hi, how are you?
Somebody didn't get the memo, they all wore different colored shirts.
This is the proclamation for, and you've never heard of this group before, World's Oldest Rodeo Week, July 1st through July 7th, 2019. Whereas Prescott Frontier Days has presented the world's oldest rodeo during Prescott's July 4th celebration annually since 1888. And whereas the world's oldest rodeo is celebrating its 132nd year. And whereas, J.C., you don't look that old. Whereas Prescott's rodeo is led by 1981 bareback world champion, five-time Prescott champion, and Pro Rodeo Hall of Fame inductee, J.C. Trujillo. And whereas Arizona's second-largest parade, the Prescott Frontier Days Rodeo Parade entertains thousands each year during Rodeo Week. And whereas the rodeo is a collaborative effort that instills civic pride and supports our western heritage, cowboy culture, and values. And whereas the world's oldest rodeo financially benefits businesses and citizens of Prescott as well as those of surrounding communities. And now therefore Greg Mangerelli, Mayor of the City of Prescott, Arizona, does hereby proclaim July 1st through July 7th, 2019, as World's Oldest Rodeo Week and encourages our citizens and guests to enjoy and support the world's oldest rodeo.
J.C.?
Well, it's quite a treat. I know 132 years of any event is unbelievable. And it's quite a tribute to Prescott, to all the rodeo fans and all the businessmen in Prescott to keep this rodeo going for such a long time. And the thing that really makes this rodeo work, other than our sponsors and the businessmen that help, is all our volunteers. And everybody up here behind me is a volunteer, and everybody on our, every one of our board members are volunteers. And we'll end up having around 600 volunteers this year, and we couldn't do without it. Thank you very much.
Oh, yes, we need a picture. All right, John. Where's your hat, Shiska? Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Great to see you, yes, thank you very much, thanks, Chris. All right, let's all go rodeo.
Good to see ya. Good to see you. That's right.
Very nice, thank you, Councilman Shiska. Now we will move on to our consent agenda. So, did anyone ask to pull any items?
No items were requested to be pulled, and we will be approving consent agenda items 7A through 7H.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor Protam, I move to approve consent agenda items 7A through 7H.
Thank you, please vote. Somebody's been messing with us.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you. Now we will move on to consent ordinance.
Adoption of ordinance number 2019-1676, amending Title III, Chapter 3-10, and adoption of resolution number 2019-1706, declaring as public records the document filed with the city clerk entitled Chapter 3-10 Water Conservation Code.
Any comments from council?
Mayor Protam, I would move that we continue this item until we've had a chance to have the presentation that was scheduled today. There's a couple of rebate numbers that I'd like to see adjusted, so I don't think we've had a chance to discuss it.
Mr. Palladini, do we just put this to the side until later?
There was a motion to continue, so it would require a second.
Okay. Those in favor? Very good.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Good. Move on now to the liquor license agenda, new licenses.
Public hearing in consideration for a new liquor license application for a Series VII Beer and Wine Bar liquor license from Catherine Gentner Felon, applicant for Soul Ride, location 230 South Monizuma Street. The application has been determined to be in compliance with city requirements, and the application fee has been received. And notice was posted at the site for the required 20 days, and our applicant is here.
Very good. Would you like to step forward? Thank you, tell us about your business, please, yes. We know a little bit about it, but yeah.
Great, well, first of all, thanks for having us. I'm Kate Felon, co-owner of Soul Ride, this is Tina Conne, she's also the co-owner of Soul Ride. Oh, hi. We started out, we're just a proud business, part of the Prescott small business community. We started out doing tours, skills classes, group rides, things of those natures. Then we bloomed into a full-fledged bike shop. And part of our business really moved into the, not just fostering community within Prescott, but then moving into the tourist industry. And as we got permitted and insured to take people on tours, we thought it'd be a great idea to have beer and wine after your tour. You can enjoy a beer or a glass of wine. And we also do a lot of community nights where people will come. We had Caitlin Boyle, who won the 24-hour endurance ride. She has a national title, she did a little slideshow and a talk, and it would just be something that's a little alternative to Whiskey Row. We're in the entertainment district, but we're certainly not going to keep late hours.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
And we have public comment?
We do, we have Cara Gianetto. Hi, my name is Cara Gianetto, I'm a nine-year resident of Prescott, and I live within a mile of town. I made every attempt to gather information that's accurate, and with the resources available to me. And all my errors that I share here are my own, and I apologize. I do request that you deny the liquor license to this bike shop in Prescott, or any bike shop in Prescott now or in the future. I ask you consider that the physical location of the building within the 300 feet of Mile High Middle School, and remember the reason for ARS 4207, 4207C4. Please include in your decision the history relationships and context of Soul Ride's business. Up to this point, I've witnessed as a resident and affiliation that they've done tremendous growth for our youth in Prescott, for the mountain bike community. I don't understand the addition of alcohol except for what I just heard tonight, or today. The website states that Kate, the co-founder, has a three-level class certification in the National Interscholastic Cycling Association, and she's the head coach of the largest middle school composite in the state of Arizona. This may not be current anymore, I don't know. I don't, I do know that Prescott High School has a mountain bike team that will be starting their fifth year this fall. The reason I ask you to deny this is to prevent the pervasive normalization of the drinking behavior associated with the biking behavior. Once you do that, it's done. It's already pervasive, I think we all know, that sports and alcohol are very associated, but it's normalizing it that I'm protesting. And it makes no sense to add alcohol to a bike business because everyone has a role to play. This is my role, this is my perspective, mine alone. And I'm here to ask you to play your role as elected officials and to support what's in the best interest of Prescott residents. Keep biking and beer separate in the business world. You can prevent normalizing biking and school alcohol in Prescott. While the physical occasion again is within the ARS 4207C4, I ask you look deeper. In the case-by-case basis, the context of this business has been associated with interscholastic programs, and they've done a wonderful job. I don't, again, understand why they would want to go a different route, except for what I heard. Is there enough convenient alcohol access in Prescott downtown, in the entertainment district? I live within a mile, I'm pretty aware of what we have down here. I think that the application was posted today, I'm sorry, today there's a storage crate post, there's a storage crate with Coors logo boldly displayed and located between the space between Figgy's and Mile, Soul Ride. I do not know who owns it. It's in the direct block of the field of Mile High Middle School. I don't know who owns it, I don't know how long it will be there, I don't know why it's there. I just thought you should know. I do know that the website on Soul Ride also states, "We'll ride from the bike shop and then return for Frosty Pint on our patio, all are welcome." That normalizes drinking with biking. Again, the association is prevalent with the rodeo, or I'm sorry, with the whiskey off-road. We know the beer gardens are down there, I'm not saying they're creating this. The pervasiveness is there. The normalizing is when you solidify a business together. Now you're saying, "Come ride their bike."
Virginia, could you finish up for us, please, thank you.
So today's kids in Prescott have been positively influenced by the Soul Ride owners. The application to sell alcohol as part of their business does not make sense. In fact, the only sense it makes is to have a separate business for this license. Please consider the conflict and vote to deny the license. You can make, you can prevent normalizing these behaviors in Prescott, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. So Sarah, you were saying that everything is correct. She meets all of, Soul Ride meets all of the qualifications.
That's correct.
It's in the entertainment district?
It does fall within the entertainment district. PD, Community Development, and Business Licensing have all reviewed the application and have had no issue. And I did speak with the Liquor Board as well in regard to the Series VII application. They meet all of the qualifications, and there would be no issue at the Liquor Board level either.
Any discussion from council? Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Mayor Protam, I move to approve recommendation for a liquor license application number 63814 for a new Series VII Beer and Wine Bar liquor license for Soul Ride, location 230 South Monizuma Street.
I'm going to second that motion, but just before I do, I want to go over something with Attorney Palladini, because we've been down this road before here, all right? And if everything is in compliance with state law, we don't have a right really to say no.
No, actually, we, we're, the council in this case is making a recommendation to the State Liquor Board, and the council can vote to recommend, or can recommend no to the Liquor Board. It's merely a recommendation. If, if, the basis of the recommendation has to be factual, and there's a, there's a list that the state looks at to see if it's, if it's reasonable and based on one of those, one of those bases for denying, recommending denial of liquor. Or what happens then is, if there's a no vote, then it automatically sets up a hearing at the Liquor Department where the city would have to go to advocate its position, and if it didn't, the city didn't show up, then essentially the Liquor Board would disregard the recommendation and most likely approve the, approve the license. But in this case, there really isn't, not hearing really, a factual basis because it is in the entertainment district, and therefore it doesn't, it doesn't, the 300-foot buffer doesn't apply.
Thank you for that explanation. The last time we did this, the Liquor Board came up here, and, oh, you weren't here yet, you weren't our attorney at that time, he wasn't our manager. But we voted no on one of these, and the Liquor Board came up here and told us, as long as they comply with state law, they were going to issue them a license to sell.
Right, and that's usually, that's usually the case. But again, local government does have the authority for input on a, on a liquor license, but it has to be based on some, some issue or concern, like there's too many liquor licenses in a particular small area, you know, proliferation of liquor license, for instance. Or there are, there are some factual bases that the council could recommend a no, recommend no, or recommend no approval, but I, but I'm, unfortunately, I don't really, I didn't hear any from the speaker.
That's what I was asking.
Thank you, Mr. Palladini, so we have a motion and...
Second.
I'd like to make one more comment, Mayor Protam. I think that this business has an opportunity to demonstrate responsible alcohol usage. And certainly, we hope that that's exactly what you do.
You have a motion and a second, please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Very good, and congratulations to Soul Ride, and we appreciate your business. Thank you. Now we'll move on to the regular agenda, item number A.
Final plat for Whispering Rock, FNP 19-003, commercial subdivision of 79.66 acres.
We're firing up some equipment for just a moment. In the meantime, this is a final plat. It is a final plat for Whispering Rock. It's something that this council looked at some time ago as a preliminary plat. There we go. Just to give you some general area, it's on Willow Creek Road, it is directly across the street from Haas Drive, which is the north entrance exit from Emory Riddle University. The final plat that's proposed before you today is eight commercial lots and eight residential lots within a subdivision. That's actually slightly fewer lots than from the preliminary plat, but that's okay under council's policy in the Land Development Code. Final plat can have less lots, as long as generally the street connections and the total number of lots don't exceed what was shown on the preliminary plat. So this meets all of those qualifications, and certainly can be approved by council if you choose to do so. Two important issues that I think need to be addressed as part of this. One of the reasons I have the aerial photo up, and I think it's important for you to see, as part of the final plat, one of the things that Dr. Oscari, who is the property owner and subdivider, has done is to set out a very large area of granite rocks, granite boulders, very much in keeping with the dells that run all through that particular area, set that aside as open space, and in fact dedicate that open space to the city. So it's, it's a more long-term, perhaps perpetual protection of access to that space by the public. He also has a trail system and parking areas to allow access into trails, and those trails eventually, once properties to the east of this eventually develop or acquired by the city, will allow connectivity all the way over to the constellation trail system. So we're working towards a very large area of connection. But again, a very large open space area designated as part of the plat. And just to give you a view of it from Willow Creek Road, that is the open space back there. So a significant thing in favor of the city and a good way to save particularly sensitive open space areas.
George, is that 25 acres?
Yes.
Yes, totally right.
The overall subdivision is roughly 80, counting all of it. One other issue, just wanted to make a quick point. There are two primary entrances and exits into and out of the proposed commercial subdivision. The southernmost one aligns with Haas Drive, and that's important. This will allow, at this location, a four-way signalized intersection to provide safe access in and out, not only for this subdivision, but for the already existing church that's located here, who right now have to take their lives in their hands to cross Willow Creek Road. So this is a very positive thing from a plating standpoint, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. We do have representatives, Dr. Oscari and representatives his here, if you have questions for them.
Any questions from the, or comment from council?
I just want to say thank you for investing in Prescott.
Dr. Oscari, would you like to come up to the mic?
Yes, absolutely.
You've been working on this for quite a while.
Oh, my God. I want to say thank you all, City of Prescott, for past former mayors, Kirk and Ellen, he's been my advisor, and Mayor Oberg and Mayor Mangerelli, he's not here. After 30 years of living three continents, learning few different languages, and finishing medical school, meant to be the destination, beautiful Prescott. And we want to bring a destination medicine and summer medical facility to a town that northern Arizona no longer need to go to Phoenix. And that is a dream to come true. But boy, going through this development for past two years, it was harder than medical school.
And Dr. Oscari, thank you for that beautiful open space in the building.
Absolutely.
Gorgeous.
Again, I want to say thank you all for supporting me for this. And some of my friendly patients tell me, "Dr. Oscari, you're building the whole over town." That is not my desire, you know? I always say if Mother Teresa, Ronald Reagan, Princess Diana, you name a few people that role model are, to me, if they didn't take a penny out of this world, Dr. Oscari's not going to take any penny out of Prescott either. So whatever I build here, it belongs to Prescott, it belonged to planet Earth. God bless America, God bless you guys, thank you for supporting me. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Oscari. So with no comments, can I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve final plat, FNP 19-003, for Whispering Rock subdivision.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Congratulations. Very good, now we will move on to item B.
Appointment of Deputy City Attorney Matt Pedraki as interim city attorney during city attorney's military deployment.
That's the item.
Thank you for your service, we're going to miss you.
Well, some of us will.
Yeah, just want you to be safe out there. Can I have a motion, please?
Hey, John, where you, where you going again?
CENTCOM Area of Operations.
I was just going to offer to share a shirt with you, if you, if you need to go and show them what Americans really dress like.
Mayor, I move to appoint Deputy City Attorney Matt Pedraki as interim city attorney.
Second.
Those in favor, please vote. Just please vote, thank you. All right, looks like we're going to let you go.
6-0.
Just to clarify, we wear our away uniforms when we go play over there, so.
Well, our one command is that you be safe. And thank you again for your service. We're moving on to item number C.
Approval of Contract Amendment 2019-069A2 to Dibble Engineering.
Hello, Kristy.
Hello, how are you today?
Very good.
Good. I'm excited to be here with you today. My name is Kristy Miller, I'm the Airport Management Analyst out at the Prescott Regional Airport. Robin unfortunately couldn't be here with you today, as she is in St. George, Utah, meeting with airline personnel. So since the last time she was here with you at council, we've had a lot of exciting things happening out at the airport. If you haven't seen the award certificate in the mayor's office, I am excited to announce that Robin and I, in early June of this year, or this month, received, on behalf of the City of Prescott, the Outstanding Airport Award, in which we were really excited to receive on behalf of the City of Prescott. This is a huge recognition for us, is, it was up against everybody in the Western Pacific region, which encompasses airports in Arizona, Nevada, Hawaii, Guam, and the Commonwealth of northern Mariana Islands. So, so thank you all to the leadership for your support at the airport, you guys helped us get this award. So thank you for that. We've also broken some records out at the airport with enplanements. We saw that in May of this year with enplanements, with 5,176 passengers on our flights out of the airport, which was really exciting. So that kind of leads me into a big announcement I have to refer to you guys today, that Robin, as I mentioned, was just meeting with the SkyWest officials out there. And I'm very excited to announce to you today, due to the overwhelming support of our community, the airline has agreed to add seasonal, additional seasonal flights this November and December. So the schedule isn't yet finalized, but we're really excited to see what that schedule will be. So this item I'm bringing to you today has to do with amending Dibble Engineering's contract. Back in May of last year, we put out an RSOK, or a Request for Statements of Qualifications for Professional Engineering Services. And at the time that we put out that RSOK, it included a sample contract for the services. And unfortunately, it was based on some old procurement code, and had some language in there that was applicable to the old procurement code. So this item here is just to bring it back in alignment with current city procurement code that was approved after that RSOK was put out. So in May of last year, that's when the council did approve the new procurement code. So if you have any questions on that, that's what this item is.
Any comments or question from council? See none, can we have a motion?
Mayor Protam, I move to approve Contract Amendment Number 2019-069A2 to Dibble Engineering for Airport General Architecture and Engineering Services for Prescott Regional Airport, revising contract language to align with the current city procurement, procurement code.
Second.
Thank you, please vote.
Passes 5-0.
Very good. So Kristy, you're doing, well, congratulations on new routes. I know it's a new route, but, but additional service.
Additional frequency, that is correct, yes.
That's wonderful, that's very good news for us. So now we move on to item D.
Approval of Authorization of Services Number 6, 7, and 8 for Amendment Contract Numbers 2019-069A6, 2019-069A7, and 2019-069A8 to Dibble Engineering.
Okay, thank you again. So this item here, as we've gone through the design process for our new airport passenger terminal, we've encompassed a few additional items that we've been looking at needing for the terminal. Due to the magnitude and complexity of the project, back in March of this year, we actually brought on a C-MAR partner, a construction manager at risk partner. And as we've gone through that process, one of the biggest things that we've noticed is, is that the construction costs are a lot bigger than we anticipated. And so we've been looking at a lot of value engineering options as we go through that process, and we've actually gone through five very extensive, very long looks at how we can bring the cost back down to make sure that we are as close to budget as possible. And as we go through that redesign process, it will take some additional funding to go back and redesign the cost at this point. But we have been looking at approximately $3 million in savings. Now, all these Authorization of Services actually are reimbursable expenses with the FAA, anywhere from 85% to 95%. We're still working on that final number with the FAA as to what that would be. So, as I mentioned, they are all reimbursable costs that we would be seeing, so it's approximately about $5,000 to $15,000 is what the sponsor share would be. This is something that we would be taking on at risk, but the FAA is, has faith in us that we can get this project done, and although we don't have the funding at this time finalized, we won't come to council until we have that final funding.
Any questions or comments?
Mayor Protam, Kristy, congratulations, by the way, that's quite an accomplishment, a lot of airports in that region.
Yes.
You and Robin and the rest of the crew, Doug, have certainly deserved it. Has there been any particular components of your construction estimates that kind of stand out as far as escalating costs? Is it components, materials, labor?
It's a combination of materials and labor. We have a very hot market here in Arizona right now, and, and our joint venture C-MAR provider is actually going out and getting estimates right now. So we're getting actual estimates from vendors. Now, it will still go out for a bid process, so we expect that we can still bring those costs back under, a little bit further. But both materials and labor market is so hot right now that that's what we're seeing.
Sometimes the consequence of a thriving and growing economy...
Correct.
...has a tendency to cost a little more to get some of these bigger projects done, so thank you.
Very good, can I have a motion, please?
Mayor Protam, I move to approve Authorization of Services Number 6, 7, and 8, Amendment Contract Numbers 2019-069A6, 2019-069A7, and 2019-069A8 to Dibble Engineering for additional services for the new airport passenger terminal designed for a total cost of $101,318.26.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, please vote.
Passes 5-0.
Very good. Congratulations, Kristy, again, on the award and, and the additional service. That's spectacular. Now we will move on to item number E.
Award of City Contract Number 2019-242 to AUI Inc.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protam and council. This next item should be pretty short and sweet. Pipe bursting is a semi-trenchless technology used to replace and rehabilitate sewer main, and the City of Prescott Waste Fire Division utilizes this technology as well to replace and rehabilitate some of our aging and undersized sewer mains on an annual basis, just to keep up with the aging infrastructure. We do budget... annual basis, just to keep up with the aging infrastructure. We do budget $750,000 every year for this type of rehabilitation. And with that contract value, we are going to be able to rehabilitate several thousand linear feet of gravity sewer in and around the downtown area. And new, with this contract, we are going to burst and upsize a force main, which is going to lead to significant operational efficiencies for a lift station that feeds that force main. So that's new with this contract. Excuse me. The City of Prescott has worked with AUI before on the pipe bursting contract, and we have renegotiated the annual contract this year. And that was primarily to include the, the bursting and the upsize of the force main new this year. We're familiar with the contractor and his staff, and we're recommending award at this time. With that, I'll answer any pipe bursting questions that you might have.
Anyone have any pipe bursting questions?
It's quite a thing to see.
I'm sure.
And infrastructure like this is certainly not cheap to keep up with. So it's a necessary cost, and particularly in those, those areas of the community, keeping them safe and, and utilities reliable is certainly important, so.
Very good. Can I have a motion, please?
Mayor, I move to award City Contract Number 2019-242 to AUI Incorporated for pipe bursting in an amount not to exceed $750,000 annually.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 5-0.
Very good. Thank you, Eric. On to item F.
Public hearing for the fiscal year 2020 budget expenditure limitation and tax levies, and then a special meeting adoption for Resolution 2019-1709, adopting the final fiscal year 2020 budget expenditure limitation and city job roster.
Thank you, Sarah. Mayor Protam and council, this is the end of the, well, not the end, it's close to the end of the six-month process that we started to get this budget together. On the screen, I have the comparison. It says tentative. Of course, it's tentative until you adopt it. Obviously, the new budget is $220,068,922, 15.1% higher, but only 5.7 higher in the operating budget. We did publish, after the budget was adopted in the paper, once a week for two weeks, so we have met all the requirements. As Sarah mentioned, this is the public hearing, not only for this budget. It also includes our expenditure limitation, council. Well, I'm sure remember that we are under home rule where the expenditure limit is set each year through this public hearing and the action at the special meeting. It is also the public hearing for our property tax levy, which, again, did not go up this year, except for new construction. The actual property tax levy will be considered by council on the July 9th meeting. It has to be two weeks after this public hearing. So with that, as Sarah said, after this public hearing, council will consider a resolution at a special meeting establishing the budget, setting the expenditure limitation, as well as adopting the roster of jobs for the City of Prescott. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Question or comments from council?
Councilman. I think I've made my objections to the budget pretty clear in the last review. I still have those objections. I still feel that we are not meeting the spirit of our pledge to pay the full original ARC payment and the additional 443 tax revenue collections. So while that is still in the budget, I will not be voting for it.
And just to clarify, I understand council and good's comments, but to clarify for the public, we are paying the full required ARC out of the general fund this year.
Current ARC, not original ARC.
But the ARC is what is required annually and is sent to us, and we are paying that full ARC out of our general fund. In addition to, every single penny that's raised from Proposition 443 goes right to monthly, down to PSPRS. I think, we just cannot say that clearly enough, because there's been misrepresentation out, out there of what the council's doing. So I appreciate, Mark, if you have anything else to add to that, I would appreciate it.
I, I think that's clear. And again, I, I understand the position. Yes, the ARC changes from year to year. It goes up, it goes down. We're paying the ARC that is required, which is what ARC stands for, Annual Required Contribution.
And we're not using 443 money to do that. We're using the general fund, and we have since we passed 443. If we stay on schedule as we are right now, we are scheduled to pay the 443 tax down, the unfundability down by 2025.
Yes, I think 2026 or '27 is the end of the tax, but I believe we will hit the December of 2025.
Thank you. Just think it's really clear that we get the truth out there. The other is opinion. So can I have a motion? Or do we need to close the, the meeting?
This will be yes, the motion to close the public hearing.
It's not opinion, Mayor Protam. It's a fact. We're looking at the poor performance of PSPRS. They're underperformance. We're assuming they're going to get better, when we have all the facts to indicate they will not get better. They also are calculating their ARC based upon an 18-year amortization schedule, not an eight and a half year that we have in the remaining tax. So these are facts. They're not opinions.
The facts, Councilman Good, are that we are doing exactly what we told our citizens we would do. We're paying the 44, using the 443.
Don't say "we," please.
Because, the council, I will say the council.
You.
Could I have a motion, please?
Mayor Protam, I move to close the public hearing.
Was there no, was there no public comment?
Oh.
I did not receive any, no.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, Councilwoman. Shoal has made a motion. Can I have a second?
A second, their motion. That was to close the public hearing, correct?
Passes 5-0.
So now we open?
So now we will open a special meeting. Would you like me to do a roll call or just simply announce council members that are not present?
Let's do a roll call.
Okay. Mayor Protam Orr.
Here.
Councilwoman Blair.
Still here.
Councilwoman Good.
Here.
Councilwoman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Shoal.
Here.
And the record will reflect that Mayor Mangerele and Councilwoman Shishka are not
Very good. So now we just, we need a recommendation to move for the budget.
Adoption of Resolution 2019-1709, determining and adopting final estimates of proposed expenditures for fiscal year 2020, declaring that the same shall constitute the budget for the City of Prescott for said fiscal year, establishing the expenditure limitation, and approving and updating the job roster for the City of Prescott.
Thank you.
Mayor Protam, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2019-1709.
Can I have a second, please? Very good. Please vote.
Passes 4-1. Now we will need to adjourn the special meeting, reconvene the regular meeting, and then adjourn the regular meeting.
Okay, so we will adjourn the special meeting and reconvene the regular meeting.
Thank you.
And there's no other item on the regular meeting, right?
No, Mayor Protam, there is not.
So now we can adjourn, adjourn the regular meeting. So this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for being with us today.